Good evening and welcome to the December 2014 Board Workshop. Thank you for attending, we have a very interesting agenda this evening. With that, Madam Secretary, please call the roll. Here.
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 Here. Board Member Evans did put a request in that his absence be excused, so if a board member would like to make that motion at this time, we will make that formal.
Move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Mr. Rogers and Ms. Manzer. Any conversation around that? Please call the roll. Yes.
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 Yes, with that, board members looking for a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion of the agenda? Please call the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes, with that, we move into Section 2 of our agenda tonight, we'll be getting monitoring reports around Board Policy 4.3 as it pertains to enrollment, and an update from the master planning process which is relevant to Board Policies 4.1.4, 4.1.7, and 4.1.9. With that, Dr. Green, we will give you the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, parents, patrons who are here. These two monitoring reports complement each other quite a bit because the enrollment, as we look at where we've been, where we are, and what we're trying to accomplish has significant implications to the things that we're doing as far as our master plan, and what the future holds, and what we seek to accomplish. So you'll hear two reports today that will kind of outline both the opportunities we have, but also will be very clear and candid about the challenges we face and what we plan to do about them. So without further ado, I'll have Dr. Tanya Gilbert come forward to present.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Good evening, Board Chair Hile, Board Members, Dr. Green, Cabinet, Staff, and Guests. I'm delighted to present this evening's district enrollment to you. However, before we begin, we'll take a look at our SMART goal and our definitions, and as we've discussed in previous workshops, we understand that we're either noncompliant, developing, on target, or compliant. At the current time, we would assess ourselves as developing, although we exceeded our projected enrollment of 13,866 students, we just didn't quite meet the 5% increase that we had projected that we'd like to for the SMART goal, so therefore, we would rate ourselves as developing at the present time. The data that you will hear this evening is based upon enrollment entry and exit codes that are reported in our Tyler Student Information System, and we receive state funding based upon our annual enrollment numbers. Our enrollment is determined by the number of students that are participating on the last Wednesday of September, and this year that occurred on September 24th. That's okay. Thank you. And so if you take a look at the blue bar there on that graph, the third little dot from the left, that's where we're currently being funded, and that's an enrollment from SY13 of about 15,700 students. And so it will be our goal to get, increase our enrollment back to at least the 15,700 for the current school year. And although in previous years we've seen some declines in our enrollment, as Dr. Green has already said, although we were a district in demise, we are now currently in the rise. And so between last year and this school year, we have increased our enrollment by about 450 students, and this graph will explain to you where we actually received those students from. If you take a look at the far, which is my right, where it says "remained," a little more than 11,000 students remained with the Kansas City Public Schools. So if we had a 3rd grader that was enrolled at Garfield, and he rolled up to the 4th grade, and he attended on August 11th and is still with us, that student is classified as "remained," and they remained with our district. Charter schools, as you'll see on the left, on my left-hand side, we ended up picking up about 477 students from charters this school year. I'll also go into more detail a little bit later, a side-by-side comparison as to the number that we brought back versus the numbers that also have left us, and I'll do that for each of those categories. But just going down this graph here, you'll see that we received about 215 students from dropout recovery, and more than 700 students had their initial enrollment with the Kansas City Public Schools, meaning the first time they've ever chosen to attend public school, or any school, they chose to begin with the Kansas City Public Schools. So about 740, and most of those are kindergartners, we do have a couple of first graders that this is their first time having school. And so also you'll see other Missouri, those are surrounding school districts and other school districts in the state of Missouri that families may have moved into the Kansas City area out of country, self-explanatory, as well as out of state, and also private schools. You are probably very familiar with this graph, you usually see it every Friday in the Friday packet. This is our demographic information for our enrollment. Currently, we're sitting at about 14,550 students. 51% of those are males, 49% are females, 57% African-American, 27% Hispanic, 9% white, and the remaining 7% are comprised of Asian, Indian, Pacific Islander, and multiracial. And we have a little less, about 12.8, 12.7% have IEP, so they have a sped classification. This graph is our enrolled versus withdrawals, and you'll see side-by-side, I mentioned previously about charters, although we picked up 477 students from charters, we lost 803. Also, you'll see where the unverified, these are students who are currently not attending, however, Dr. Cordova and his team are charged with and so are our schools, with finding where they're currently attending school, and we will code them correctly, once we have tracked them down. Also, you'll see on the right-hand side under withdrawn from KCPS, other Missouri, most of the students that we've lost have moved out of Kansas City, and that's how we've lost most of our students, to moving out of the state, or out of the region. Enrollment is particularly important to the district for a number of reasons, but some of the obvious reasons that what we utilize is for staffing and budgeting purposes as well. So we start very early with projecting for the next year, so that we're able to staff our schools accordingly and budget them as well, and so that's why this data is very important to us, and we keep track of this data. Our Director of Enrollment, Lori Garnos, runs our enrollment reports every single day, and they're disseminated to Cabinet, Dr. Green, and Staff. Excuse me, if you take a look at this charter analysis, I broke it down into two actual slides. This first one you'll see, what we did was to break down all of the charter school enrollments, and so we picked up students from all of these various charters. And as you can see, Hogan Preparatory Academy was the leader, and 73 students came to us from Hogan. And, you know, and polling some of the parents that we've spoken to, most of the parents who are coming back from charters, although they may not give us a specific reason, for the most part, we always hear, "It wasn't what we expected, it wasn't what we thought, it just wasn't, it didn't work out for us," and so they're coming back to the Kansas City Public Schools. Now, this is an analysis of students that left us and they went to charter schools, and you can see there what stands out is Frontier Academy. And so possibly for a number of reasons, Frontier Academy provides door-to-door transportation. I can tell you that my staff, we called every single charter there and asked what was their transportation distance. Do you provide transportation, if so, how far does a child have to live in order to receive that transportation? Majority, door-to-door. The only district, Academy Lafayette, excuse me, has one mile. If you lived a mile from the school, you're a walker, but if you're over a mile, door-to-door. Everyone else is door-to-door, with the exception of Allen Village and Alta Vista, it's three to four blocks. Kaufman, four blocks. University Academy, one block. And so what we hear consistently over and over from families, whether it was through knock and talk, whether it's through families that are just coming in to withdraw, transportation is an issue. And so it's one of the things that Dr. Green is definitely charging us with looking at and seeing, is this something that we need to revamp our own transportation policy? Because as you know, ours is a mile and a half distance before a student would qualify for transportation. And so for these very reasons, and possibly others, we see that students are leaving. I will say also with Frontier, not only do they provide door-to-door transportation, they're also a K-12 campus, so they have sufficient space to enroll other students. And we also heard at the beginning of the school year that they had a new policy, whereas if a student was accepted from the Kansas City Public Schools, they wouldn't allow that one student to enroll unless the entire family came. And so, once we contacted the state, they said, "No, we're not doing that," but we heard from more than one parent that was seeking to enroll one child from the family, but they said, "You have to enroll all of the students from the family."
And, Dr. Gilbert, and how, and just, could you, their performance, Frontier's performance, we did a comparison of that, right?
Dr. Green, I will tell you that, as we all know, more than half of those charters that are on that list have scored below the Kansas City Public Schools, including Frontier. Here you will see the Missouri withdrawals, these would include charters as well as surrounding school districts as well, and once again, this is just to show you that most of the students that have left the Kansas City Public Schools have moved from this area. You'll see Frontier kind of sticks out there, but most of the schools, you'll see other Missouri, you see Independence and Hickman Mills, most of our students have moved out of the area, and so those are ones that while we cannot prevent or help them moving out of the area, there are students that we will be going after, and some of those, of course, would be charters, privates, home schools, and things of that nature. Which I just kind of broke down for you, as far as the breakdown of the withdrawals by grade, I highlighted all of the yellow because these are what we've kind of termed in my office as recoverable students. These are ones that we will be aggressively going after, the 803 that left to go to a charter, the 1,033 that we don't know where they're currently attending school, whether it's a charter or out of state, but we were going to clean that data up, along with Dr. Cordova's team, actually, we'll clean that data up, and we will aggressively pursue those students, as well as the 62 that are homeschooled and the 83 that are in private schools right now. And I will note for, as you can see, kindergarten, we lost 405 kindergarten students. These are, these were 4-year-olds last year that rolled up to kindergarten this year, and so 113 of those left to go to a charter, 166 are attending somewhere, we'll just need to find out where. Well, we do see that 9th grade also was the second, was another grade that we lost students, but as you'll see, 154 of those we're still looking for, and will also be, it's 166 that also moved out of the area. And so when we do pursue these students, we have hired a residency investigator. Jamie Collins has been with us since October 20th, and it's Jamie's responsibility to go out and to verify residencies. As you know, we have students or families that have waivers, who say that they may not reside in our district, or they may not reside, they reside with someone or outside of our district, and she does physical verifications to ensure that they are still living where they claim that they live. But more importantly, she will not only be tasked with verifying residency for students who are currently ours, but also for charter schools. And the reason being is that we know that we were going to take the hit financially in state and local taxes if a student is attending a charter school and who does not currently reside in our district. And so we have been apprised of several situations where students are being dropped off from a charter school bus, at a charter school bus stop, and then being picked up in a car and taken to Johnson County, KCK, Hickman Mills, and other places like that. So Jamie will be doing those surveillances and those home visits to make sure that they're actually residing where they should be, or where they claim to have. I mentioned to you before our projections, and so right now, we're looking at our stretch goals, or our targets, our enrollment targets by grade level, by building. And so Mike Reynolds in our assessment department is a guru when it comes to projections, and they're based upon census data and enrollment trends and a variety of other factors, but Mike has the task of also trying to balance the fact that there are some of our schools that have capacity issues right now, that they are pretty stuffed. And so while we would love to say we're going to increase our enrollment throughout the district, every school 10%, we do know that there are some schools who physically aren't able to increase their enrollment. So he is right now working through that, and you will see, and I think it's the third to the left column where it says SY16 goals, we're trying to get to that 15,700 mark that you see down below, so that we will not miss a beat as far as the funding. As I indicated on that second chart with the third bullet from the left, that's what we're currently being funded at the present time. So what are we going to do in order to recruit students back? And I know the topic of this conversation has really been about recruiting students back, but we also have to realize that we also have to retain the students that we currently have with us. And so what we've done is, we had a billboard campaign, we had five different billboards you may have seen throughout the city. I personally almost wrecked my car three times trying to look at the billboards everywhere I was driving. It was pretty exciting to see our "Gear Up For Greatness" campaign. We also had automated and personal phone calls, we mailed a postcard out to every middle school student. There was not one enrollment fair or back-to-school fair that occurred in the city over the summer that someone from our admissions department did not attend, and once again, Lori Garnos has, we have these mobile buckets that we pick them up and we're ready to go. And we also did positive, excuse me, media coverage, we did knock and talk, where we heard a lot of responses as to, you know, people didn't really know what was going on in the district, we were happy to share those. Dr. Green has parent symposiums, we have an increased presence on social media, we have early enrollment for our neighborhood and signature schools that started on November 24th. We already have, I just received a report before coming in here today, we already have students already enrolled for the 2015, 15, 16 school year, and for the first time, we're having a winter kindergarten roundup. If you recall, I said those kindergartners that we had lost to charters and other places, what we're doing now is to really strategically go after those 4-year-olds and let them know that we have kindergarten roundup and we want to keep them here. And so we also increased our email marketing and also a video series. Here's a picture of the billboard that we actually had, I think this is the one from Truist and 23rd, as well as those were the ads that we took out in Dos Mundos, the Call Paper, and Globe. And so also, I'd like to take a shameless plug, Mr. Tunis, as I've already begged for that enrollment bus on the right-hand side, I'd like to have an enrollment bus to go through the city. I don't want... I just think that we could meet our parents where they are, we could park in certain areas, we could enroll students, we can provide immunizations. Mr. Brenneman says that he could provide internet access, Louise has already said that he could use it as a truancy bus, and so we're pleading with Mr. Tunis to give us the funds for this bus. So having said that, do you have any questions for me this evening?
I have another comment too. This transportation paradox is something that we're taking a very serious look at in some of the many meetings that we're having with board members, where we share with you scenarios of moving the boundary or the radius in, what it would cost, and what would be the impact perhaps of drawing students back, if we move within a half-mile radius, if we move a quarter of a mile, if we move to two blocks, what that looks like in kind of a cost-benefit analysis, how many students do we need to pull back to just to actually address the additional cost of the transportation, but we're going to be pretty aggressive in that area, just wanted to make sure the board knew that that was forthcoming in some presentations we're going to give to you.
All right, board members, let's go ahead and take a round of questions. Ms. Robinson, I was geared up, so fire away.
Oh, I was going to ask you about the transportation piece, because if a, currently if a family is in a neighborhood school and they move, then they lose their transportation right, is that, is that correct? Like, and so, one of the options may be that they may go to a charter school so that they can get that transportation versus not having transportation at all. So I guess the question would be, in your transportation analysis, could you maybe include some of those things? Because I think that that's, I've heard that a couple times.
And correct me if I'm wrong, my team over there, but if they want to go to a school other than their neighborhood school...
No, they want to stay in their neighborhood school.
Okay.
But they moved outside of the bound, they moved outside of the...
Oh, the radius?
Yeah, they moved outside the radius for their neighborhood school in the middle of the school year, and then transportation is no longer available. You know, one of the things, they could just be like, "Okay, well, I'll go to a charter school because I will have transportation." That, you know, in your analysis.
Ms. Montero?
I think, on the transportation issue, I think that's a good topic and subject to address, because I do know, and we did have a community speaker address the issues about transportation, not picking up children at their destination, and I do know other charter schools have been having the same problems in high turnover with transportation. So I think the discussion piece of looking into even more of maybe utilizing and looking at our contract in dollars of when transportation is not obligating their contract duties, of having workers pick up the children because they didn't have anybody available that day, that's very unexcusable. And I've heard that not just from this district, but from other schools as well, of that high turnover, so I think that's a piece for us to negotiate and look into, what other alternatives or choices do we have, and I think that recommendation of yours of looking at the two-block or half-a-mile radius is a great idea, because if we're supplying a huge contract to a transportation unit, which I think they only have maybe like three choices, and one is the tax company, and then two other companies. So for me, if, if looking at the contract and being more strict about it, and being more diligent of how many times did they miss our children, picking up our children, how many times children have been left because of that, not having enough employees, I think that's something, a good discussion to talk about and include that in the report, where we can look at expanding or coming up with some kind of other solution to help our residents to get to school, because all your presentations and all what the Cabinet has done about kids needing breakfast, kids arriving to school on time, kids being there every day in attendance so they can learn and not be behind, and if this is a huge factor that we're seeing, that definitely needs to be addressed. So I don't know when the discussion would be, but I hopefully soon, and we can look at that, especially before huge winter snowfall comes in to play as well.
Brandt?
I just want to say, I appreciate you presenting this information in this way. In my entire time on the Board, I've always thought of this as kind of a fiscal trade-offs issue in terms of just looking at the raw cost. Transportation is a beast, and so, you know, pushing back the radius as a way of a cost savings, and that's the way I've always thought of it, but now you're kind of challenging me to think that, to question to what extent, you know, it's not going to be true for all of them, but to what extent did we, through saving money on transportation, cause families to choose a less, a lesser educational option for their children because of the greater convenience? Because as I look at this list, there's a bunch of schools on here that we clearly outperform, and so families, you know, if our policies are creating a space where families are having to choose, feeling like they have to choose a lesser educational option for their children because they can't afford the transportation themselves, I, like I said, I just wanted to say, I really appreciate you reframing that for me, because I've never thought of this issue in that manner.
Yeah, I think what we're also seeing as we dig deeper into this issue is safety, it's another factor, the distance to be walk, and weather is another factor, and now that we're dealing with seat time, it used to be if a student showed up even an hour late, it didn't necessarily affect the school's report card, but now it's every minute, every day. And so, what I meant with several principals, they were saying, sometimes, my, part of my struggle is, when the weather's bad or there's something that's happened in the neighborhood, parents will bring their child later, or wait till the transportation arrangement can be made, but that may be two hours late, and that means we've lost seat time with that student, which is what DESI is measuring us by. It's kind of interesting.
Mr. Rogers?
Just have two observations. First one's attendance, and I'm really glad to hear us addressing attendance, because that's a real concern. I think we can draw students back if we can make some adjustments there. The other observation that I have, and I mentioned to Dr. Green, I was leaving to come to Board meeting, I did hear the signature schools being advertised today on 107.3, so those ads are out there, and if I heard it, I know other folks are hearing it too.
Ms. Manzer?
So I guess a couple of things, and I think I'm a little bit where Mr. West was, I've always been a little resistant about overspending on transportation, because it takes away money from, I think, the things that actually make our schools really special and different, and the extracurriculars and other things. It would be interesting for you all, and maybe you've done it, is to look at what proportion of those, some of these charter schools budgets, annual operating budgets are devoted to transportation cost, and maybe you've looked at that, but you should be able to get that from their 990s. I think you should look at that, because it would be interesting to see if they're spending a disproportionate amount on transportation over the educational program, so I think, you know, at least some of those schools you consider your top, I would definitely look at what they're spending, and how they're spending their money. So the question I had is, how, what is the process by which you follow up with families to ascertain why?
In our admissions office, we have a standardized withdrawal enrollment form, and it asks you, "Why are you leaving the district?" Some folks choose not to tell us, I will tell you, just in conversations, transportation is by and large the number-one factor. We heard up until recently, there were parents who were concerned also with placing their middle-school-age students into our high schools, but now that we've opened up middle schools, they have that option now, so transportation pretty much leads the way as far as, one of the reasons why... So transportation pretty much leads the way as far as, um, one of the reasons why people are leaving.
And, and partly I wondered about that then because you're, the most, children are primarily leaving, it seems, at the kindergarten level and ninth grade level. So maybe the middle school thing will address that. Is transportation the reason why kindergartners are leaving?
I, I couldn't say why the kindergartners, and I don't know if, uh, Mr. Kitsey is prepared to, because like I said, those are our fourth graders that, I mean, our four-year-olds that moved up into kindergarten and children's. Well, thank you.[632.12][632.12](laughter) But we haven't had, um, and I will tell you this, from the notes and the comments, we do see a lot, um, from the schools of saying, didn't feel he was ready, not ready for kindergarten, and whether that's the parent saying that and they're going somewhere else or not, but that's what the, the explanation they give to the school secretary and the school secretary records. By and large, it's always, I didn't think they were ready.
And then, um, I guess another question I have is to what extent, um, how many of your schools are holding open houses and how are, how are these open houses being promoted? I thought school leadership, uh, Darryl, do you?
I think we addressed that comment that you had earlier asking us about that. Um, we have asked the schools to send us their information, and we gather that information and then post it on the school website as well as the district website, but it is up to the school to let us know when those events are occurring, and we'll be working to make sure that we have an updated list so that we can get it on the school website as well as the district website, and then through all the other social media and everything else that we do to promote those. Many schools have ongoing, like, school tours, so there's not specific dates tied to those, but we will do, um, uh, you know, a better effort in getting that information posted and getting it out.
Sorry, one last question, promise. To what extent are principals, I know you had an enrollment goal overarching for the district, and, and I think that's important, and then you have to really work at that goal because a lot depends on us doing this well. So I think the other question I have is to what extent do principals, um, are they, are they tasked with taking any ownership over enrollment and achieving enrollment goals as well? Or are you carrying that burden on your back, or is to what degree does that get held also by principals?
I'll, I'll start, and I'm sure, uh, Mr. Davis will finish up. One, what I did fail to mention was in our projected targets, those are, we're targeting new students to the district. So you're not able to just, you know, rob, you know, your neighbor down the street and say, okay, come to my school. So these are new enrollments to the district, one. Number two, principals are charged with that. A couple of, about a month ago, we, um, had a principals' meeting when we had our strategic, um, planning meeting to kick off enrollment. And one of the things that, um, we provided them was to give them an overview of how many students they actually attracted from outside of the district. And so some of them were shocked, um, some of them, you know, thought that they, you know, that pretty much represented their school pretty well. And so giving them that data to say, okay, this is where you're standing right now and you're going to be tasked with going out to aggressively recruit along with this. I mean, me and my staff will be on the sidewalks of all of the charters, passing out literature to, to just let families know that your child is being, is enrolled in a school that's doing, I won't say worse, but, you know, not as doing as, as successful as the Kansas City Public Schools, and I don't know if Darryl, if you want to add something.
I will concur with Mr. Kitsey. She did a great job. I was going to concur that we did recently meet with the principals and we did express that they too must go out and actively recruit, uh, the students that live in their neighborhoods and actively promote their programs. So, uh, thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Dr. Hartsfield?
Uh, thank you for the report. I wanted to ask a question on the page that said breakdown of withdrawals by grades. Um, under the heading of unverified, I was looking at your ninth graders and also at your seventh graders and seeing at that large number. Um, do we, what all is in unverified? I mean, do we know about those who might enter the juvenile system or who have totally dropped out of school? I mean, do?
Unverified is kind of, it's, it's our, kind of a catch-all category for dropout, for the ones who have left, um, who didn't follow the withdrawal process. Um, they may not have just shown up on August 11th, they may be attending somewhere else. And so that is the, the group that, uh, Dr. Cordova and his team, they run a report and they actually go out and do home visits, they check Moses IDs. Um, we, it's just as recently as yesterday, we sent them another report, they have access to it to run it as well. And, uh, Dr. Cordova is already, I think, we, earlier today, we received a message from one of his, um, staff members that they'd already located 13 students on that, that list right, right there. So one of the, the frustrating parts is that a lot of times we wait until after the core data submission with those Moses IDs to see where those students are.
I have a couple of.
With regards to the numbers of the dropout, we had a number of 1,067 dropout students on Monday. Uh, today we have 785, so we've already recovered. And most of those are just coding, but we do have to call. Uh, we look in Moses system, uh, we called charter schools to find out if they're there or not. So, uh, we're really aggressively looking at whether or not this number is true, but also in two days, we've brought it down to seven six, 785.
Um, noting that this is an area or time where we're seeing that students are very at risk of dropping out, are we doing any proactive type of services to retain these students, to keep them? You know, are we considering that or?
Our office consistently looks at data. Uh, we call the student, uh, at-risk report, and we're looking at the grades, we're looking at, uh, attendance patterns, we're looking at truancy patterns, and those are the trials that we, the, the students that we go and actually make contact with and also make home visits to the parents to notify them that this is a, an issue that we need to talk about. So yes, interventions are taking place on a daily basis.
Thank you.
I, I would add to that, that Rick Bishop in the IT department has developed a actual system, a numeric system, and it basically draws out and it gives us a listing of students who are quote-unquote "at risk," and Dr. Cordova and his team uses that as their, um, guide to go out and visit with those students to make sure that they're on track and have what they need and all the resources to stay in school before they drop out.
I actually have a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, I just will, uh, you know, just, I feel like a broken record here, but I think the most valuable data you can get in a process like this is the data, um, unfiltered data from the parents who leave. I think we, we can't overestimate the importance of, of knowing why parents choose to, to leave the district. And so certainly, I'm glad to see you looking at that and will encourage you to continue to look at that. I mean, it's sometimes harsh data and it's, it's difficult data sometimes, but it is very real and very important. The other thing I would ask is, is there any effort to empower parents currently in our schools to assist with enrollment? I often find that, that the district and the, uh, you know, the advocates are, you know, are great, but, uh, you know, as a parent, uh, there is nothing that is quite as persuasive to me or meaningful to me as a parent who's had a good experience and shares that with me. And so I would love to hear more about what the district is doing to engage parents and really to arm parents with the information they need to be effective advocates for our district.
One of the things that I can say, we have worked with the DAC and the cards, the contact cards that we use during the knock and talk, uh, they have agreed to give those to different, the SACS, so that they can use those cards, carry them with them. So if they meet a parent who may want more information or may be interested in enrolling their student, Jennifer just gave me three or four cards just last week that we will follow up with those parents who are interested in learning more about the district. So we know that parent-to-parent contact is really important. Uh, just last week, we participated in a fair with Show Me Casey Schools and had three of our schools represented there, the three that they had requested. So we will do more, continue to do more outreach and continue to engage with DAC and the SACS to use them to help recruit our students for parents and friends that they may know who may be interested finding out more about the district.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go further around the questions. I know there's a lot of, uh, discussion here. Ms. Robinson, I think you.
Mine's more of a statement. Um, I do want to applaud you, especially for your enthusiasm, your enthusiasm about the bus and meeting parents where they are. And I want us to be very careful about judgments made around choice and parent choice, especially transportation. Transportation is not a convenience. Transportation is survival for so many families. And so we have to be very careful about saying things like, folks are, you know, making choices about the quality when they're just trying to survive and make sure that their kids have education. I think that that's very important.
Ms. Montero?
Um, I have a, kind of a, a statement and a question as well. Um, the first would be really easy for maybe Mr. Cordova or Dr. Gilbert. Of out of that 785 unverified, how many would you guesstimate, or if you do know, are, are students in transition that we lose yearly?
I, I wouldn't have that information, but I certainly could research it and provide you with, uh, on the Friday update.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, because that's, that's always a concern to me when, um, especially, you know, in the cold, and we know Kansas City has a very high population of the youth, um, that are homeless. So, um, I would definitely love to, uh, see if we know that number or have that projection that we don't want to forget about our kids. Um, the other thing is, I think this, this would be more good news for Dr. Gilbert. Actually, I saw, this is very innovative too. I wanted to ask Dr. Green, this is a kind of two-part deal. Um, one, if, have we looked at, as far as transportation, um, getting the research from, I think it's Independence that purchased their own line of fleet buses? There was the natural gas, I believe. Um, probably looking at is that, what type of alternative, what the cost would be? I know it's a lot of money, but since we're talking about energy savings and things like that. But two, um, I actually saw this very innovative video in Africa that they use these old school buses and they refurbished them with mobile internet and used them as mobile schools. So, um, when I heard your idea for that, uh, it made me think about that, and it's very, very successful. And the texting with what we're doing right now with the master planning is also a huge successful thing in Africa because, um, I think like the mobile provider that they have over there, it's like one cent to text. And it was this gentleman that had, um, a herd of cows, and one of the cows got sick, and he didn't know what to do because there's no, you know, vet, and it's very miles, it's very costly. So he texted what to do for the cow, and it only cost him one cent. And, um, it's very, uh, it's, it's very, uh, effective and it, it's taken off by storm over there. So, um, I think it's looking into those alternatives and other innovations for our school district, uh, what we can do to make it easier. So I would love to hear more about possibly the research on Independence and what they did with that fleet that they purchased.
Mr. Hand, Mr. Reston.
I'll just say, it's a, it's a, a major, major decision. Um, and I, I see Mr. Tunis having a pulmonary infarction.[1362.42][1362.42](laughter) Myocardial infarction.[1365.26][1365.26](laughter) Owning your own fleet is, uh, you know, involves a lot of intricate decisions that need to be made about financial implications. I know, um, I've seen situations in which, uh, when during the cold or winter, because they own their own fleet, I think it was Kansas City, Kansas, the buses wouldn't fire up because, you know, the, the temperature got so low and, uh, and we don't have that headache, I think, because, um, they keep them warm and they keep them sheltered and, and we, you know, so you have a lot of other implications that go along with that. But we always revisit that, but wind up where we are, um, each year. But we'll keep looking at it.
Mr. Rogers? Ms. Manzer? Dr. Hartsfield? Anything else? Dr. Gilbert, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, and I would just like to add one more thing on the transportation issue. I would like to thank Lori Garnos and the rest of my staff that came here, but Lori has actually been a little crafty in the last couple of days with the winter weather that we've been having. Students who may not, um, reach the one and a mi, one and a half mile going directly to their school, she's been looking to see if you walk the opposite direction, maybe in the next block, there's a bus that's coming through, and she's been successful in finding that there are some bus stops that kids have just walked the opposite way, maybe a, a block or two, they would get transportation, and so she's been working to do that. So we're trying to help out as much as we can.
Um, the next segment of our workshop presentation, um, is our, uh, our master plan process, which, you know, is fully underway based on my previous presentation to you, and we're in full gear, in full swing now. And, um, Ms. Shannon Jacks is here to, uh, share with us where we are as well as the representatives from MGT. Ms. Jacks?
Thank you, Dr. Green. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, November was a very, very busy and productive month for Master Plan. I think, actually used the Thanksgiving holiday to catch up on some sleep. Uh, we, we're kind of full force this week as well with additional focus groups and public meetings, uh, but we wanted to get you up to speed on what's happened, some things that we've been hearing, and also what's, what's coming next. So I'm going to introduce Ed Humble with, he's the, uh, team leader with MGT of America, and, uh, he'll give you the lowdown.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Dr. Green and board members. I'm happy to be here, I'm glad you invited us. Um, this is, I'm going to, what I want to do tonight is just, as Shannon said, we've been busy, uh, because, you know, you gave us somewhat of a task to, to take on here, to develop a, a master plan, and to do that with the goals of that master plan of, uh, of maximizing opportunities for students, uh, coming up with ways to increase the enrollment in Kansas City Public Schools and maintaining the stability of the, of the financial situation in the district. So that's, that's not an easy task, but it's a challenge that we're excited about and we've been moving on with. We are on the schedule as was presented to you last month at your workshop. We're, we are on that schedule. We had a little, a little bit of a bump with the, with the weather problem on one of our public days, but I'll speak to that. So what I want to do tonight is I just want to take you through the kinds of activities that we've been doing and, and actually kind of take you through one of the, the large group, a, a sample of the, of the large group survey. I know some of you as board members have been at those and, and seen how that works and we give people clickers. I want to take you through that, and then I'm just going to give you a little brief overview of, of what we're hearing. I, I guess, no, first, uh, you know, the, all the different activities that we have going on in order to gather information and to just kind of give you an overview of that, and then just give you kind of a brief piece on what, what are we hearing? This is not findings by any means, this is not, because we, we've really got to put all this together. I always like to, to talk about the, the jigsaw puzzle and, and, and we shouldn't ever think we see the picture until we have all the pieces in place and see the big picture. But I'm going to cheat a little bit tonight and just give you a taste of what we're seeing and then give you what the next steps are. And then we're going to finish up with Susan Zaller, who's a, a key member of our team here in Kansas City, and she's going to kind of take you through the text as in process just very briefly tonight so we can walk through that. So with that, oh, I guess I'm supposed to do this, right? Um, I want to, uh, I'm going to take you through how we do at these public, uh, convers, community conversations, as we call them, that we've been holding at a number of different places around the, the district that we'll be doing. The Saturday ones, the makeup ones from the Saturday that got canceled because of the snow, we're going to do this Saturday. This is a, a, just a piece of the kinds of questions that we ask. And what I want to really get across to you is that we ask questions, you know, in a, the, the general forum at the opening of this process to get people into it. And we hand out, and as I said, some of you have been there and seen it, we hand out these clickers to everybody that's there at the audience, and then they, they click on the answer to this. We do some demographic questions to start off with. So we say, we say, one of the questions is, are you a parent or guardian? Are you a student, a community member, employee of Kansas City Public Schools? And people can then click one, two, three, or four, and then we come up with what the answer to that is. And so we would then get a screen that looks like that. This is, these are just dummy answers in here now to give you the idea of what happens immediately. So then we know immediately, this is important to have this, um, this kind of, this, this demographic data, because when we get all done with this and we start looking at what the answers to some of the content kinds of questions are, we can then, we can separate that by, what did the parents say? What did, as opposed to what did the employees say? What did the students say? Those kinds of things that we can then segregate and find out what that, that information is. So we do a number of the, of those kind of questions. Then we get into the, a series of questions where we ask people to rank. What are, do you think this item, and I'll show you some samples, are they, uh, would you rate them as excellent, good, fair, poor, or you just don't have an opinion right now? Before I go to the way we show the results on that, the purpose for this is not to do a scientific poll and say, oh, well, this is what people in Kansas City think. That, that's not it at all. It is to generate interest. People then go, and there is a little bit of, uh, it's kind of fun, kind of fun to get your clicker and, and say, I get to answer this, and then see the results. We then, when we're done, we break up into small groups, and that's when we say, okay, a number of you said, so let's look at the first one of these here. The, one, one of the questions we ask is, how would you rate the quality of education provided to students in Kansas City Public Schools? And people at first will be a little bit nervous and say, well, is, is it my school or is it? You know, and we say, this is how you want to answer it, and, because we're going to talk to you about it later on, but we're asking you overall the quality of education. So then we, we open up the polling and people click, and we'll get an answer something like this. We'll get something like, well, 13% said that it's good and seven, and 7% said excellent, so 20% of the respondents felt that it. So 20% of the respondents felt that it was either good or excellent, but a much smaller number didn't, felt like it was poor or didn't have any opinion. So then we can go to the small group and say, why? Why do you think that? And then that's where we really get the information. So some of the other kinds of questions that we ask, how would you rate the overall environment for learning? And we do a little explanation with that, because people at first will say, was it the facilities? We say, no, we're going to ask you about facilities. This is the environment. When you send your child to school every day, when you walk into the school, is this an inviting place to be? Is it a place you want to be? Is it a place your kids want to be? That's what environment for learning is. How do you feel about that? We open up the polling, people do the clicking, and then we get answers something like this. And they, you know, these don't even add up to 100%, because we just kind of dumied these in. But the answers at the actual one will be, will add up to 100% of all the people that are there, and we'll know the results of that. That then is used. I'm not anyplace going to come back and say, this is what the poll said. It's those discussions afterwards. Those are extremely valuable and give us good information. We asked them, this is another sample, how would you rate Kansas City public schools for safety and security? This always gets us into a good number of discussion afterwards. We say, why? A good number of you said that the safety and security was poor. Let's talk about that. Let's talk about how we can improve that. What is needed for that? That all becomes, this is what then drives, as we start to develop the options for developing a master plan. So that's the way we work through that. Then we have a series of questions, there's a number of other questions on that excellent one. Then we have a series of questions where we just ask people to rate, to rank whether they agree with this statement, strongly agree with it, disagree, strongly disagree, or no opinion and don't know, okay? So then people can look at things like, we ask, Kansas City public schools provides equity among all schools. Well, what does equity mean? We come back with, you know, it means what it means to you, you know? Do you feel like you could send your child anywhere in this school district? And you'll get, you have equity in programs offered, equity in facilities, equity in what's available to your child. You agree or disagree with that. Then we'll do the polling, and we'll come up with some answers. And we might have, it might have a bell curve, kind of a thing like that, where the majority of people disagree, but there's, but a few of them agree. And then we get into, okay, in the discussions, what can we do about this? What kinds of things need to be done? There's never one way to solve these problems. We ask questions like, do you agree with the statement, Kansas City public schools operates the appropriate number of schools? Always get some people kind of discussing about that, and people think about that for a little bit, and come up, and then we do the polling again, and I'm not going to go through too many of this with you, but we'll get a wide variety of responses on that normally. We have been getting that. People say, you know, we just went through the rightsizing initiative. Do we want to even think about this again? But we are spending money on a number of schools, so, and we get into some really good discussions on this one, and it's been, it's going to, it's informing us for being able to develop this master plan. As if you haven't had enough discussion about transportation tonight, we also ask the question, or we present the statement, Kansas City public schools offers adequate transportation services for students. Do you agree or disagree strongly, strongly one way or the other? We'll do the polling, we'll, people will use the clickers, and we'll come up with something like this. When I kind of put the dummy one together here, we, I put a number of them strongly disagree. And when I show you some of what of our results, some of what we're hearing, some of what the themes we're hearing, I'm going to hit you with transportation again, because that is one of them that we're hearing. So that's one of the questions that we ask. We do ask the question, overall, do you agree with this statement, Kansas City public schools is moving in the right direction? Do you agree strongly, disagree? How do you feel on that? We do the polling, we go through that, we come up with answers. The fact is, you know, I put this in like that with that kind of a scale, because by and large, that's what we've been hearing, and I'll show you that on these initial results and talk to you about that a little bit. But people tend to feel like Kansas City public schools is moving in the right direction now. There's a lot to be done, so we'll get into that. That's kind of, that's the, just the activity that we go through to start off those public meetings, and then we get into the small groups. As I said, I wanted to just go through with you all of the activities that are going on right now. Excuse me. We have the online survey that's up and running right now. We haven't had, we've just gotten that going, so I can't speak a lot about the results of that just yet. We have the textism survey that we've been doing for quite some time, and we've had some good response to that. Susan's going to take you here in just a minute through kind of how that works. We've had those community meetings that I spoke to, we're really calling them community conversations. We've done interviews with staff and board members. I believe we have been able to get to most of you at this point, maybe not every one of you, but to most of you, we've had a chance to sit down and talk to you and go through what do you see as the needs for this, for the master plan, and what do you see as the highest priorities? We're in the process of doing focus groups. We have done focus groups with students, with teachers, with administrators. We've done focus groups with parents. We've done focus groups with a variety of community stakeholders. We're in the process of continuing to do that as we speak. I did one focus group today. Susan did one focus group today. We got more scheduled tomorrow. Believe it or not, we have one with transportation people scheduled tomorrow, and it's the second one there. We're doing a follow-up one with transportation tomorrow, because that has been an issue. So those are the things that have been going on over this last month or so. Initial findings, and, well, you know, I stewed around a little bit about how I wanted to present this, because I don't want you to take away from here like, well, this is where they're headed, because we don't have that whole puzzle yet. I don't have all the pictures yet. And so we're going to have them for you, and we hope to come in here in February and really give you some concrete kinds of things that you can really look at, that really make you think and really say, is this something that really works for Kansas City public schools? But we are, I am finding, and when I read through the results, when I read through the notes from our staff's focus group meetings, when I read through the results of the surveys that we're doing, I'm finding that there is support around this district for both signature and neighborhood schools. Now, that's a two-edged sword there a little bit, because it's, that's a pretty simplistic statement, there is support. And I can back that up with some data I'm looking at, but there's some nuances in that. Some people support signature, but not neighborhood. Some people support one and not the other. And some, you know, there's some issues around that that we really need to delve into, and how does that shake out, and how can we best provide whatever, the best possibility for every student in the district? There is an issue around that providing equity. We're hearing from people that it's a difference, it's different as to which school I send my child to. There are some differences in this community, and I'd rather send my child here than here. With that being the issue, we need to, we need to address that. We need to look at how can we make sure we have quality programs for every child, every school, quality situations for every child in every school, okay? I told you I was going to bombard you with it again. I'm just, I'm echoing what you heard from the enrollment people. Increased transportation services is a priority, and we've heard that over and over again already, okay? We're seeing a wide variety of opinion on a number of things. Technology, the rollout, you know, there is the rollout of the one-to-one initiative. We're seeing a wide variety of opinion on some places where that's really been successful, some places not so successful, some, just a wide variety of opinion on the technology, on the condition of facilities. We're seeing a wide variety there. Well, and that shouldn't surprise any of us. I, as part, one of the things that I do when I get into a project like this, as the project director on this, I make it a priority to personally visit and tour every school in the district, and I have one more to go. I will have that done. As of tomorrow at lunchtime, I will have been in every school in this, in this district. And there is a wide variety, and we're hearing that from people as we go around and talk to them. So we need to address that in a master plan, okay? Specific program areas, there's people that say, boy, you know, the athletic program at our school is great, and then there's other ones we say, we really need to work on that. Some say the vocational programs are very strong, and others don't feel they're so strong. And so there's just, on specific program areas, there's a wide variety of opinion on that. We're going to need to dig down and get down into some of that demographic information, who's saying what, what people from what part of town are saying what, those kinds of things, okay? However, I did want to finish with, there is a general feeling that the district is moving in the right direction, that there's some good things happening in Kansas City public schools. We need to build on that. There is a lot of things that need to happen yet, and we need to have a plan, and that's what this is all about. And so we're excited that we get to be a part of that. Where we're headed to next, the next steps? We have these Saturday community conversations. I promised someone in this room I'd put Saturday, December 6th, so I'm going to say it. Saturday, December 6th, that's this coming Saturday, at nine o'clock at Paseo, and 11:30 at, at, where's the 11:30? At Hellcook, at 11:30. We'll do the full feature length of the clickers, so if you haven't been to one, please come. Breakfast comes with the nine o'clock one, and lunch comes with the 11:30 version, so please come if you haven't been to one, okay? Then we're in the process right now of finalizing the assessments and the data compilation. And that's one line on there. That is, that's not the out and front piece of this, like, you know, all these community things are, but it is so important. We are, we have really gone through all of the data you have about the condition of the facilities, what we call the educational suitability of the facilities, the capacity of facilities, the programs that you have. We've gotten into what programs we have, and what programs are really, people are on waiting lists to get into, what kinds of things should we be offering more of, all of that kinds of data compilation that we are really working on, okay? The next thing after that that's going to start here in December is the development of the options and the budget implications. And that, you know, we're getting to know this, your community very well, and we appreciate the hospitality that we've certainly had throughout the community. You're not going to see us so much here after about another week or so through most of December. We're going to go back to our offices and create a Kansas City room, because we've got to put all this data now that we have up, and we got to start really putting all that together and saying, now let's look at this big picture. Where is this leading us? Where's this taking us? What are some ways that we can do what those goals are? Increase academic achievement for all students in the district, increase enrollment, bring people back to this district, increase enrollment to this district, and maintain the stability of the budget and the financial situation in this district. How do we do that? What are some options? There's not going to be one way to do that. There's going to be multiple ways, and there'll be some trade-offs. Would you rather have this? Would you rather have this? So we're going to be putting that together in December and really scratching our heads and making Kansas City a priority. Come back, we're going to come back in early January, and we're going to review those options with the district first, with district staff, make sure we don't have something that's way out of line. And then we're going to go back for a second set of these community conversations and say, okay, here's what you told us. Here's some options that we're coming up to deal with what you told us. How do you feel about those? And get that input back now from the community, and then we will develop the draft and the final reports. So that's kind of where we are in this whole process. It's been, it's a lot of fun. We're in the, we're in the middle of it where it's fun. It's going to get real challenging here for the next few weeks to come up with the ways this can be done, but I'm confident that we will. And I'm confident that we're going to give you some things to really challenge you and really make you think, but really help you improve Kansas City public schools and improve academic achievement for all students. With that, the next slide, and then we'll have, we'll certainly open to questions at the end. Susan just wants to take you through a little bit of the textism program.
Good evening, board, and Dr. Green, thanks so much for letting us come. So I'd encourage you each, I know you're not supposed to in a public meeting, but take out your cell phone. Find your cell phone, everybody in the room, pull out your cell phone, and you'll see a phone number on the bottom of this message, 816-629-4365. And the question is, if you had a million dollars to improve your school, how would you spend it? So pull out your phone and text A for academics, B for athletics, C for building improvements, D for information technology, and E for other. Text it to that number. Everybody got it out, going through it? This is a brand-new approach to gathering community input. It's called textism. And anyone with a cell phone, normal text rates apply, we probably should say, can utilize this to give us some feedback. And so far, we've had a lot more response to this than we have to other kinds of survey options, because in other cases, people either have to go online and they don't have internet, or they don't want to share who they are. This does gather their phone number, but doesn't give it to the district. It just collects it in there so that we can push things back out to people. But it gathers up this information, and the really good news is, by and large, so far, the number one response for people who want to spend a million dollars? Academics, absolutely. The very next slide shows you the data that we've gotten so far, because if you took the time to go through that whole survey, there's about seven questions. At the end, you can ask for the survey data, and it'll tell you how many people said what at the end. People have found it very fun. Any person can use their cell phone as many times, they can pass it around at the dinner table and have as many people who want to answer the questions on the textism survey. So it's another tool that we're using, thanks to the district, to gather some very important information from your community in a different way. So with that, let's see what questions you have.
All right, board members, we'll go around with one round of questions and then take a few more if we have additional. Dr. Hartsfield, you want to lead us off?
Thank you for the presentation, and I'm glad you told me these were dummy responses, because I went through it at first and was quite concerned. But I do have a few questions, because I appreciate your sharing your method and your tools. I have a few questions about, though, the initial, how many, you know, I didn't understand the basis on what it was made. How many responses have you had? What were the demographics of the persons who made the responses? So I wasn't quite sure of how to make application of the information.
I can give you that information. I actually, I actually have that information right now. We've had, with the textism responses, we're over 470 right now. With the community and focus group, we have responses from over 300 right now, okay? The makeup of those, it's been a little bit different between the community meetings and the textism meetings. The number of parents at the community meetings has been 35%, a little less, 27% with the textism. The number of students, though, has only been 4% at the community meetings. It's been 29% on the textism. So we're reaching many more students with the, which really shouldn't surprise us at all, yeah? Students aren't going to come out to the community meeting as much as they'll just get their phone and do that, okay? Community members has been 22% at those community conversations, 12% on textism, and people have identified themselves. Employees have been 39% at the community meetings, 29% on textism. So we do have that, and that's, but this is just initial information. We've got a long ways to go yet.
I have a follow-up question with that. If I'm understanding correctly, you're going to be drawing this to a close in December, coming with the final interpretation in February?
Yes.
If at this time, we have approximately 300 responses, and let's just say then you double that, let's say you triple that, we're still going to have a very small number to be making the type of implications and planning that we're talking about. Does this concern you?
It does. Of course it does, and so we're making every effort that we can. We talked to some staff this morning about sending things actually out with students, getting some, just back-to-paper pencil kinds of things for students to bring back. So we're going to, we're going to do all that we can to get the numbers as large as we possibly can. So yes, it concerns me as well as it concerns you, and we're going to do all we can to get those numbers bigger.
Ms. Manzer?
And maybe this is a follow-up to Dr. Hartsfield's question. Is there a, based on, I know you're not solely trying to survey current families, but I didn't know if there's a rate at which you would consider you'd, you would have a statistically significant response rate from either staff or families. It's hard to judge on community, because that's so large.
Yeah, there's a significant difference between a statistical sample and what we're doing. A statistical sample done by like the Gallup poll identifies a set of demographic characteristics, and they will identify 1,200 or 1,500 people, and those are the only people they will talk to. They will have a certain percentage that are male, a percentage that are female, a percentage that are African-American, a percentage that are Hispanic, a percentage that go to charter school. They create the criteria. And they call those specific individuals. They will not talk to their cousin if they answer the phone. They will only talk to that person. That's a scientific poll that has a plus or minus rate of 3% to 5%. That's not what we're doing here at all. To do one of those, just to run one like that, costs in the realm of $25,000 for that one event. And they can do it in multiple, I mean, they do a whole array of things. And that ends up, but they ask a series of questions and they would come up with a poll. What we're doing is gathering community input, and there's a world of difference. So we aren't saying we have to have 412 So we aren't saying we have to have 412 teachers or 482 community people in order to have a statistically valid. This is not a vote. This is, what do you think? What are the ideas that are out there? What are the issues? And you're absolutely right. The more people we have participate, the more we will know from what the community thinks. So we really do want a large number of people to participate. We don't want it to be just the 1,200 people that Gallup would go and talk to.
I guess my other question is, are you also drawing on or analyzing other kinds of data that's available in the community around growth, projections around population, where we'll see population growth or shifting of demographics, maybe 10-year, 20-year projections around development, economic development, employment, that will feed into some kind of landscape review that would also feed in data to what you're doing?
Yeah, and the answer to that's yes. We've got, we're gathering data from city people. We're gathering data from just different agencies that have that. The power companies have a lot of that information. We're gathering all of that that we can. So we can try to look at where growth is going to occur, what kinds of things could cause some growth, where students are going to be, where people that, there's some trends in this community about people that have children up until school age and then move to a different place. And so, we want to, we want to get all of those trends that we can, and we've got people working on gathering all of that data. That was that, again, as I said, we had that one single line on there. You don't see that. That's not out in front of you, but we're gathering that information because it comes, it becomes a piece of that puzzle we have to look at.
Mr. Rogers? Mr. what? And? Ms. Montero?
Yes, thank you. Going back to kind of Ms. Hartsfield's concern, my concern as well, when you're going and you're going to finalize the assessments of data and going out to the community about the development of options and finance implications, are you going to utilize the same method that you're doing now of setting up those meetings again? Or are you seeking out different measures of different means to communicate that?
No, it'll be a different, it'll be a different format at that second round. Because this one is to get people talking, to get, to gather some information, get people to start talking, to instigate that dialogue, okay? The next one will be, did we listen to you? Here's some things that we think might make some sense, and we'll have very specific things then to look at. So it'll be a different format. I can't tell you exactly what that format is because we really haven't developed it yet, because we haven't developed those options yet. But it, but it, it, just my experience tells me it's always a different format. It won't be the clicker divide up into small group things. It'll be, it'll be, you know, we'll have a variety of things we do, but it'll be a different format than that.
Okay. Now, in doing that, now that we're going to go, moving on, finishing up the, these large-range questions here, then I know the community, when you dive down to more, it was much more specific issues. Now that you're going into the development options and budget implications, how are you seeking out community partners? And will the Board and community get a list of those that participated afterwards? So are you, are you going after, or is there recommendations given to you of church organizations, non-profits, community partners with the district, since we have a huge list of community partners that partner with the district? How do you do that? Is it given to you, or do you seek it out yourself? How do you do that?
There's both. And the fact is, sometimes there's, I'm getting phone calls and emails from people that are hearing this is going on. That's, but by and large, we've sat down with district staff and gone through, here's the kinds of groups that we typically do. And we have had faith-based groups. We have had nonprofit organizations. We have been doing that. And yes, you'll have, we'll have, in the final report, we'll list all of that, okay? So you'll, you'll know exactly all the different groups we saw. So we go about trying to get that. We have to rely on those of you here right in Kansas City. Because, because I, you know, I'm, we're engulfing ourselves in this community, but I can't know it like you know it. And so, we have to rely on you to help us know who those groups are. And then we ask when we're at those groups, do you know of others that we should be talking to? And I would ask you as Board members, if you know of some, and some Board members have communicated to me, if you know of some, please let us know. Because we're willing to get out, and we, the more groups we can hear from, the stronger this will be.
Ms. Robinson?
I have two questions. One is around the, I'll start with the textism.
Textism.
Okay. I've done this four or five times. And so, does it automatically, because I really like how it populates this graph, does it automatically discount the repeats?
You're trying to get four votes yet, huh? Is that right?
Yeah, like, because I, because the other, my other, around this is that I wish you would just automatically in my browser update all of the responses, like real-time, so I don't have to keep doing it to see this. So, but does it automatic, since you have the number, the telephone, you have my telephone number?
You know, we can, we could have set it so that only one call from a number, but we didn't on purpose because some families have one cell phone. And we wanted to allow, you know, mom or junior who has the phone to pass it around and let anyone around the table to do that. And we always get this question, both with the clickers and the online survey that we do, people say, well, what if somebody really wants to stuff the ballot box? Well, again, it's not a poll. It's not a scientific poll. It's gathering input. And if somebody really has the time and energy to sit there and answer this survey 471 times, well, they must have some deeply held strong opinions. But this is not, this is not the answer. This is one piece of the puzzle that gets put together with all the other pieces of information that we gather from all around the community, and then we begin to look at it. So it's just one piece of data.
I may be a little bit like you because when this first rolled out, I was checking it like every hour to see how quickly the numbers were coming in. So if you've, if you go through the entire thing, at the very end, it gives you a link. If you keep that link, you don't have to go through the whole survey again. You can just click on the link again to get the latest results. In fact, it sits in my browser, and at least once a day, I look at it. Because we're doing everything. Nicole White on staff has been out at drop-offs and pickups, although she's sick this week, so she hasn't hit as many as she would have liked. But we've been trying to get out to each of the schools, and so I've been checking to see if it's been effective, that particular approach. So it is nice because you can see immediately, okay, did that outreach effort work or not? And so, in fact, I sent her, I didn't see her in the office because we were in Jeff City yesterday, and I sent her a text and said, hey, how did those go? We only had three come in yesterday morning. So, so we are trying to really evaluate which efforts are working and what's not.
So you can hit refresh, and it'll, okay, great. I just kept hitting it, thinking it was going to be more, and there wasn't. The other question I had was around the development options, and you talked a little bit about how those are going to look differently. How do we ensure that those more concrete ideas that you have that may work, how do we make sure that they're not cookie-cutter approaches utilized in other areas? How are, how can we ensure that there is organic to meet our specific needs? And that happens a lot of times when you get consultants.
You know, I, I, I can't, I really want to answer that question, but it's going to sound self-serving. But how you know that is, we're not going to do that. We're not going, if, you know, I would, I take pride in the fact that we build it, when we build a report for Kansas City, it's Kansas City's report. We're not going to go back and read, where did we just do something? Nashville. Well, I'm not going to go back and read Nashville's report and say this works for Kansas City because it might not. Now, the fact that I know what they did in Nashville, that helps, that helps. There's no question. We can learn from other places. But this has to be Kansas City's solution. It can't be anybody else's. And so, I don't know, I don't know exactly how to answer that, except I want to say, here I'm a consultant here saying, trust me, but I want you to trust me. Because I, you know, it's going to be very important to us that we don't give you a cookie cutter, okay?
A couple of questions quickly. One, excuse me. If you could, if you could speak to, you mentioned earlier, you're kind of learning as you go, and you're improving your process as you go. If you could speak to just one or two examples of ways you've changed your process as a result of maybe best practices, and give us an example of how you're learning there. And then the second question I have would just be, it sounds like there are Board members here who would very much like to funnel some folks your way and to make sure this information gets out. Just if you could reiterate how Board members can help spread the word about this and make sure that we have a good population.
Okay. Do you want to give any, can you give some examples?
When you, when you, the first question that you had about changing our process, are you speaking here in Kansas City or across the system?
So I thought I heard a moment ago, and Ms. Jackson, it might have been you, talk about using different strategies to spread the word and to drive people to these community meetings. And I was curious to know if you had implemented new strategies or you've made adjustments during your time.
I think one of the adjustments that we've made was that we don't come in and say, you must hold four meetings, and this is the time of day, and this is kind of places you need to hold them. We come into a school district like Kansas City and say, what have you found that works here? And we listened to a lot of people, including members of the DAC, who theoretically represent parents and community members. And they said, you know, one of the ways that we've found to get parents involved is to do it at parent drop-off in the morning. So by golly, we went to schools during parent drop-off, and we were buttonholing people as they were coming in at the Early Childhood Center and saying, hey, you just dropped your kid off. Now, if you just walk down the hall right here, you can join in our, in our meeting. So we're trying to go to where people are rather than just saying, oh, y'all come to us. Y'all come to us. And I think that's a, that's a unique feature here. We've never done a parent drop-off kind of capture at any of the other schools. We do, the textism piece is new to us as well. We've not used that in any other of the places, but we're going to steal it and use it in some future kinds of work that we do.
We're good. Just the second part of the question.
How to get, how to get information to us? The best way, the best way, and you know, our, our key contact person at the district is Shannon. And if you can let Shannon know, believe me, she, she's, she finds us. She has found me on airplanes. She has found me on, I mean, she's, she finds us. And so, so she'll get that to me. If you'd rather communicate directly with us, I'll give you my card. It has my phone number, it has my email, it has, you can, you can text me, you can leave me a voicemail, you can send me an email. I would encourage it. So I'd be happy to give you that, that information, okay?
If Shannon has found you, the microphone is going to take you out of the way.
Sorry, I can't let it go. I'm not sure if we answered your question, but if it was targeted to what can you do to help get more people participating? You know, sometimes you have to ask people three, four times, hey, we really need your input. And we've been dealing with some folks that you're not really going to use it, you're just trying to get a number. But you are influential in your communities. And so, asking parents, family members, community members, businesses, what have you, to attend the meeting, we have two more on Saturday, we know that's not for everyone, participate via textism, get engaged.
Online.
Online.
There is an online.
The full survey.
The same one that you would do with the clickers if you came on Saturday is available online off of the district website so that people who don't want to come out on a Saturday and participate can do the full set of questions and give us their comments on every question.
As I might add, the other thing that we, the group, they did take our advice, and they're going to get the hard, the hard copy, the traditional way, not necessarily the technology way, but, and we're talking about incentives for bringing the survey back to increase the recidivism, and send it home with students, and have parents fill it out and bring it back, the traditional way, hard copy way.
Next week, Justin and I were just talking this afternoon about a strategy of having a video piece done by our students, trying to get other students to participate. And I think we're really excited, and Dr. Green, I can't wait to brief you on it because you have a part. But, but helping us, once, once we load that onto social media, helping us get that out, you know, we're, we're working hard at this one. You know, it's, different things work well for different people and for different audiences. So we need everyone's help in the room to get there. So, thanks.
Thank you. I think we had maybe one more straggling question. Ms. Montero, did you want to ask that?
Yes. With the outreach of, you said you went into schools and gather even more students to do the, what they like to do, texting. Was it more of when you visited the schools of teachers, or was it students, or both? And then my other thing was, if you were doing students, of the students that we have like at East and Northeast, do we have this available in Spanish, Arabic, Vietnamese, other, have we even thought about or discussed that?
Yes.
Yeah, we have. Which language is Shannon?
Shannon's right behind you.
We have textism in both Spanish and in English. Spanish got uploaded later, so it has a really low number still. So we've got some work to do there. Flyers, we have in four languages, Arabic, Vietnamese, Somali, Spanish. We did thank you to our ELL team. We were able to piggyback off of their potluck. So we did have a session where we had it translated into four languages? Four? Four? Four languages. So we got some really good feedback from different groups there. But that's, that was one of our efforts that we knew it was going to be easier to get feedback from folks if we, if we went to an event that they were already going to be at, and there was lots of great food there too, so.
We also went to the community college and piggybacked on a outreach activity that they were holding there, that they had invited students from each of the high schools to come to the community college for a orientation session. So prior to them going into the orientation session, I met with them, and we held a focus group right there at the community college. They were sort of captive audience because the pizza didn't arrive in time. So it was a great group, a very diverse group of kids who were terrific participants.
Thank you. I had actually a question for maybe Dr. Green or somebody else on his team in regards to this incentive. The parking lot money, I know it's probably like specifically for like schools, it can apply for like say debate team that wants to go to some regional challenge. Is, I don't know how the rules are exactly, but do you think, or maybe looking into, maybe is that being an incentive to a school, if they're, get the most out of their school at 90% turnout, that they can utilize some of that parking lot money for whatever they're needing?
Short answer is yes. And we use it for a variety of different reasons around incentives. In fact, around attendance incentives right now is being focused on, but certainly it's something like this of a priority. We do always entertain different projects that schools want to present, and usually I have them bring the students up, and the students actually make their case for the project. But in this case, we will certainly look at that as a resource to incentivize participation.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any further questions, so.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. Appreciate it.
Board members, thank you very much for a good meeting. I appreciate all your efforts and your questions. To our audience, please join us in two weeks for our final meeting of 2014. Everyone have a holiday season. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.[1792.88][1792.88]